Call this regular council meeting of April 26, 2016 to order. I have a prayer by Councilmember Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening. Do your work, we will do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they can state their cause with honest and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll.
Cavode?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
And I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 22, 2016, and the council work session of April 12, 2016. Are there any changes or corrections? And actually, we do have a correction on the 20th, April 12 one. Our paperwork says agenda and change that to minutes. Hearing no other changes, minutes so approved. This is the time for residents to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Doug Kohler, thank you for your drive. You know everybody here, so good evening. I think later this evening you may be discussing the future Green Hills Harvest Fest. I wanted to put my two cents in. As the Chair of the Recreation Commission, I wanted to say that the commission met and discussed it at length and unanimously is in support of the continuation of it. At that point, I was asked to give a presentation, maybe a budget, maybe a scaled down version to the committee. So, a week or so later, I met with the committee, presented what I thought would make a more scaled down, more intimate Harvest Fest and not go so overboard. Came up with what I consider a reasonable budget and I believe the committee at that time was in favor, is in favor of us. At the same time, out on social media, a petition got started asking people to support it, what they thought about it. I should have printed out and read the comments, I didn't get a chance to. I've got almost 50 signatures. I was up here all week, so we had a lot of time to work with this. The petition was just asking if they enjoyed it and if they thought it was good and could continue. We felt it was extremely good for the community, not necessarily 100% for Green Hill residents, but even for bringing in outside residents, outside people, it still brings them into our community. Further value for what we get for it, we thought it was a very good idea and we highly suggest and recommend that you consider that if you discuss it this evening. Thank you. Here's a copy of the petition, it went out. Just going to give it one, two, Catherine, you can give these to Maria if that's all right. Thank you.
Doug, I have a question while you're up there. One of the challenges in the past has been getting enough volunteers. Out of that, out of those 50 people that signed that petition, do you believe any of them would be willing to volunteer their time to help?
Yes, I have a full complement of volunteers without any problem. I would still like to have more volunteers always and I would always encourage and like you all to be there because it helps bring community together also.
Sure.
I have a full complement of volunteers and I've also committed to doing what I have to do.
Yeah, and I appreciate your, your past efforts and work on it. I'm not sure, is this on the agenda for tonight? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Well, Maria may report on it.
Sorry, Ms.?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tonight I've asked Maria some questions, village manager. Ms. Coback, I'm curious as to how many residential properties we have in our housing stock from those that we purchased in 2008?
Oh, well, we have two residents still in buildings occupied. We have five buildings total. All the rest are vacant, so.
I know, considering a lot have been sold. Now, how many are still, are vacant or non-habitable?
Well, we, we have intentionally vacated some of them.
Well, how many, how many are non-habitable at this point in time?
Let's see, it's, let me add up in my head, eight, eight, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, I believe.
Two or three? And?
Twenty-three.
And how often are they inspected?
Well, again, the majority of those have, all the utilities have been cut off.
So you understand the reason I'm asking the question?
Not really, no.
I'm afraid if you have, properties are pretty much non-habitable but still standing and there's a high probability in this days and age that we could turn and they could return it into crack houses or heroin shooting hours. Now, we do have a prime, now, the 401 says no. We've had people die.
Right now.
We're monitoring.
In green hills from a heroin overdose.
But not many of our properties.
Yeah.
So you're off base, in my opinion, but I don't want to get into an argument with you on it.
Because of the history, recent history we have in the village.
Yeah.
And secondly, the shopping center has been sold. As I understand, it's owned by an LLC, which is bad news for the village from a liability standpoint. The owner, as I understand, lives in Florida somewhere, still has the same manager, et cetera. The entire second floor on the southern part of that property is probably uninhabitable. There's at least a one window broken there now. And I doubt it's been inspected by the village anytime recently, either by the fire department or health department or otherwise. The excuse has been given, we can't get into it without a search warrant. Well, at this point in time, you have a new prosecutor who's had 20 years' experience in the Civil and Criminal Division of Hamilton County Courts. He could probably write a search warrant in his sleep, so that's not an issue. If you want to do, inspect it, do it. That also concerns me is the possibility of potential problems with drugs if people get in the upstairs and use it, because you wouldn't know it.
Okay, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll make a comment. Yes, there is a new owner of the shopping center and I'm hopeful that a lot will get accomplished with the shopping center. I think the new owner has already started cleaning up some things. He's got some projects underway, has met with people about repairing the roofs, repairing the asphalt around the area. He has somebody regularly coming in now and cleaning up the shopping center, litter picking or litter sweeping like they do up at Kings Island. So, in my opinion, to add that we should give this individual a chance to succeed and do something positive for our community versus jumping on somebody. So, that's my opinion.
I hope the future proves you're correct.
Well, I hope it does too, but let's not immediately start being negative and hammering on somebody. Okay. Next.
We are expecting very severe weather in the area here very shortly, so bring in your children, your pets, and be prepared for potentially the power going off. But radar is showing very severe weather entering our area. Sorry.
Joel Suggs, 33, Kildare. Maria, some meetings, but my next door neighbor, I'll keep his name, he picks up the garbage around the shopping center. It's a nice, just when they'll move back. That's all.
I know, it has, it has gone for years. First, he would walk his, his dog and do that, and then now he does it himself continuously all around. He kind of like cuts out areas. Sometimes he's on the, on the area there for Wynton and Damon, that whole corner there, and clean it up. I know. I know.
So I would encourage if we can do the Harvest Fest, again, the conservative estimate by the commission is that it would lose about 1,500, as the report is given in the last couple of meetings, and that if it goes well, you know, you might break even, maybe $100 or something like that. So, what he said.
Any comments about the golf course? It looked like it to be in great shape last night when my wife and I went for a walk and hit the ball three times.
The ball machine is up a few hundred bucks from last year, as of this day.
Great.
I think the membership are about the same amount. Great.
Thanks, Joel.
Maybe we could get the people signing the petition to donate each 20 bucks or something like that and we would be.
That's being, being to that, actually, to cover it if there is any kind of deficit involved.
All right. All right, moving on, municipal manager, Yvonne Coback.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have some comments I'd like to make and follow up to Mr. Walter's comments that certainly our apartments, those that are vacant, we are monitoring those closely. We have made a concerted effort to make sure they're secure. The police are there frequently to make sure doors are locked, things like that. So we are definitely keeping our, our eye on them. We've posted some trespassing signs, floodlights, any, any issues that come up, we're addressing them immediately, so. And what we are doing during all this time is, is evaluating the potential to redevelop those properties, so that's, that's what's underway with those. Regarding the prosecutor, and I, I don't know that we've used an excuse that we couldn't get a warrant to go into those buildings. The fire department has a right to go into any building at any time to do a, an inspection. But the use of the prosecutor is inappropriate for what we want to accomplish there. In fact, I'm sure the chief can go into more detail, that you, law enforcement can't be used to just go in and, and search for whatever, we don't know what. They have to have a reason. I don't, Chief, you could probably do a better job with this than me, but there has to be a, a specific crime, criminal intent, that kind of a thing, where you can use a warrant for that purpose.
Probably our law director could cover constitutional law better than I.
There you go.
But search warrants have to be based on probable cause, so the only search warrants that, in a 40-year career that I've been associated with, have been for criminality. I'm certain that there could be a search warrant, or I believe maybe there could be for a civil type issue, but I'm not familiar with it, Jeff.
There is. I mean, it's called an administrative search warrant and it's something that can be obtained in order to do inspections related to potential code violations. But it's actually based on the exact same standard as the criminal one, and that is, you have to demonstrate probable cause. And you have to have someone fill out an affidavit to say what they suspect and what their probable cause is, and then you have to take it to a judge. And I have no doubt that your prosecutor would be great at writing criminal search warrants and administrative search warrants, but you have to actually have probable cause to do it, even on the administrative level.
And is that necessary if the fire department wanted to inspect?
Well, the fire department is different and fire department has certain authority in the enforcement of fire code issues. I mean, if that's, but that's a fire department determination to whether they need to do that or not. If, if the village has concerns of other code violations, codes that we would normally enforce, your, the inspection company that you use is very familiar with the process of getting administrative search warrants, and when they deem it necessary, they would let you know.
Okay, and I too share the mayor's viewpoint that we've met a couple of times with the new owner. Yes, it's an LLC, but I, I'm not aware of too many people purchasing things out there right now and operating businesses that haven't set themselves up as LLCs. I mean, it's to their advantage to do so. So yes, indeed, it's, it's an LLC, but there are people behind that. They are working on plans, they've been given a list, very extensive list, of issues that we have seen down at the building, but we do feel it's appropriate to let them get bids from contractors and come back to us with a list of what they're going to be dealing with. One of the immediate issues that we have talked to them about, and that's some temporary signage to first announce that the, the building's under new ownership. We felt that was critical to get people interested again. It will also indicate that there is space for lease, and I think they, what they would like to do, like with the second floor, is have a tenant in hand and then finish it to suit that particular tenant. So, I felt it was appropriate, the mayor and I had talked with them about it, for the village to feel that that would be a public purpose served to have our shopping center filled up. And to that end, what I would do is enter into a limited right of entry with them to put up that temporary sign for a period of 90 days. And then in the meantime, we're going to be working on, they are going to come back to us with some schemes for permanent signage, which is something the center has always really needed. And then I would work with Jeff Forbes on a lease for property to erect that permanent signage. So, the first step would be the temporary, you might see the go up perhaps yet this week or early next week, but know that that will be followed up with something permanent that will require your action to get, get that lease in place.
And approval.
Permanent signage, right, right for approval. So I want to make you aware of that. Also, I distributed a list of the park talks, the dates, they'll all be from 6 until 7, and I've indicated the locations. Chief and I are both looking forward to these and hopefully have good weather, but if we don't, I don't know, maybe we'll have a little pop-up tent or something, whatever, to accommodate people at each of these. So mark your calendars, I'm going to be putting this in as an ad in the journal next month, and I'll also have it on our website. We'll do flyers that people can pick them up whenever they're interested in doing that. So, really looking forward to that. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is that I am working on legislation that I'll be bringing to council probably next month, looking to reinstitute our step increases that were eliminated, I believe it was back in 2009. Obviously, this is something council would only do if our financial condition permitted us to do it, but our steps are very antiquated, so should we ever go back to the step system, which is what this would do, it, it brings our steps a little bit more into line with current, as well as probably making some staffing adjustments to, to meet the village's needs. So that's all I have at this time. As legislation comes up, I'll be happy to address it at that time.
Questions or comments? Law Director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing specific to report, but I can address any questions the council may have.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Catherine Lyles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The April 2016 community calendar and ordinance numbers 2016-01-LNR and 03-LNR were posted as required. Also, notice of the cancellation of the Community Development Committee of April 13 and the rescheduling of the meeting of April 21, and notice of the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of April 25 were also posted as required. And I did attend the public records training on April 1, and I also attended the Ohio Association of Parliament, Parliamentarians' annual session on April 14 through 16 from Columbus, Ohio. I did present a workshop on 13 regulations during that time. Additionally, the Community Development Committee meeting scheduled for April 1st was also canceled and notice was given of that. And if there are any questions that we can bring to the board.
Hearing no questions. Chief of Police, Neil Furman.
Thanks, Mayor. We have conducted a great deal of training in the last month. We participated in officer safety awareness training that was provided by the FBI at no charge to local law enforcement agencies. Lieutenant Ward and our police clerk, Bonda Sekoi, who also serves as our accreditation manager, traveled to St. Louis for the conference conducted by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And I think it's a smart thing to do to have staff attend that conference prior to an onsite, and we have one coming up in December, so that way we learn all the latest things that we need to be in compliance with. On April 7, we had a number of officers that attended an eight-hour training on youth mental health first aid, and that was typically offered at a cost of $170 per officer, and we were able to get that through grant funding at no cost to us. On April 15, Lieutenant Ward and I went to Columbus at the Ohio State Patrol Academy. There was training on the new state collaborative initiative that governs use of force and recruitment, and Lieutenant Ward is heading up that project. This month, all of our officers are completing online training through the Ohio Peace Officers' Training Academy on crisis conflict management. On March 28, Lieutenant Ward and I met with Steve Stuhler, who is a, offers psychological, psychological services in Fintetown. And he grew up here, wanted to offer his services to the community. He wanted to offer training for our officers. So as a first step towards that, we've identified about three officers that he's going to sit down with and map out some training for our departmental meeting that'll be in the fall. And he and the other psychologist in his office will be training our officers on a tailor-made training program. In addition to that, he has offered, he deals with a lot of addiction issues, so he's offered to be in attendance at a community meeting that could be attended by anyone in our community to identify things that family members should look for, for addictions, whether it be drug or alcohol, and to help them cope, have strategies to cope with that if a family member would be addicted. I plan to approach Marty at the Village Troubadour to ask for a date. He's been a bit under the weather and hasn't been able to get back with me as he recuperates, but we'll set that up in the near future. And in addition, I've already contacted the head of the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force, and of course, we would bring in Brian Johnston, our own in-house investigator, and perhaps someone from DART to present a, a lot of information to our residents that might be interested in that. On April 12, the group consisting of clergy and retired police officers contacted us about officer safety in today's crazy world and furnished a Bible for each officer, and those were distributed. On April 21, I met with former council member Chris Visnick and other members of the Green Hills Community Presbyterian Church. They've offered to discuss collaborative projects between the church and the police department to provide for the needs of the community, particularly people that we run into that often have no food or shelter. On May 19, coming up next month, we will be conducting our second community-wide neighborhood watch meeting at the Village Troubadour. That will cover a lot of the same ground as the meeting in November, and it will be offered for those folks who weren't able to get to that meeting last November. In addition, we are going to have the Emergency Management Agency. They are going to present a segment on emergency preparedness for bad weather and any type of other disaster or terrorist concern that might befall our communities. We've also talked, we have an officer who is trained in self-defense training, so we're going to have him there to offer any self-defense tips that folks might be interested in. We'd like to use that meeting as a springboard, as Yvonne already mentioned, for our neighborhood parks meetings, where we will have members of our Citizens Police Academy, the alumni will be in attendance within their own neighborhoods. Finally, also at that neighborhood community meeting, we are going to have a contingent from our Citizens Police Academy that will talk a little bit about the academy and hopefully get some people interested for our September session. Jim Miller, who organizes the Village Concert Series, has contacted us. He would like to recognize the department, and our Citizens Police Academy graduates will be handling that program on Wednesday, June 8. We'll have our officers there. On June 11, we'll be conducting entry-level police officer examination. We've already received a number of signups and we're very encouraged by that. I mentioned the Citizens Police Academy, that will kick off on September the 15. For any of those that might be watching, there are applications available on our website, on the main page. They're also available in our lobby. You may recall that we changed the mayor's court collection service from a private for-profit collection agency to the collection arm of the Ohio Attorney General's office. I have a bit of a story to tell you about that. Last month, we received a call from a former mayor's court defendant. He says, "You took my money." She said, "Excuse me, I don't understand." He explained that he has owed the court $177 since 2014, and the state of Ohio was set to grant him an income tax refund. Well, that didn't happen because we got the check, and that's exactly why we switched to that service through the Attorney General. So, we're hoping to receive a few more of those. During the month of March, we investigated five accidents, that's up from three in the same month of last year. Six crimes, that was up from two last, last March. 205 other incidents, down from 249. We made 614 contacts with citizens, 298 of those were dispatched by our communication center, and 316 were self-initiated by police officers. We provided assistance to the public in 94 instances, we assisted other agencies 45 times, and last month, we made 32 criminal arrests and 55 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions or comments? Chief.
I just wanted to pass this to the chief. I took part of, in March, of March 31, of the Much In Common Forum for Leaders in Government, and it's with a crisis having to do with haring. And they have, it's a three series part, and then the other one is tomorrow, and I have my notes in here, the booklet that they had passed in here, and I would like to pass that over to you. I don't know if anybody here would be, present, would be available to go there tomorrow.
President, I thought it was Thursday. It's tomorrow?
I believe it's Wednesday.
You forwarded, or no?
Was it Thursday then? They switched them with, with the Thursday then?
Yes.
Okay.
Thursday the 28th from 7:00.
Thursday the 28th, okay.
7:15, if you want breakfast.
In the morning.
In the morning.
Yes.
Till 10:00 AM. It starts at 8.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if.
There's another one in June, the third, the part three.
Okay. All right. And I was going to mention that, if anybody was interested in going over, since it's sponsored by the Hamilton Municipal League, so. And, and I was supposed to do the court receipts, except they're lost on my desk somewhere. So, the next regular council meeting, I'll do two months worth. And I wanted to make additional comment about the new owner of the shopping center. Yes, when somebody's from out of town and it's an LLC, you don't always know what you're going to get, but we've so far, I think, lucked out with what we've gotten at bargains and buyouts. Somebody who's fixed their property up, put a lot of money into it, and I'm hopeful that the owner of the shop, new owner of the shopping center will do that. I know he's, since he closed at the end of March, has spent several days here and has gone over every square inch practically of the shopping center. He's the first owner that I know of in years that's walked all the roofs of the shopping center and has people, has already had some people coming in and doing some things up on the roofs. The one building that had the blinds all skew and everything, they made that look presentable, that's up, just down from the library above. And I think he's met with every tenant there. When he was in town a couple weeks ago, I saw him, he and, I think, an investor with him, measuring all sorts of things around the shopping center. him, measuring all sorts of things around the shopping center. So, you know, we have to give him a little time to formulate where he's going to spend his money to improve it, but he wants to make money on it, and I think we should help him make money, because if he can make money and if he can get the shopping center full of renters, then the village benefits from all that, mainly through taxes. So that's my take on it. Committee reports, finance and audit, Mr. Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on April 25th at 4:00. We reviewed two pieces of legislation. We talked about the timetable for the budget for 2017, which I can't believe we're just through the first quarter of 2016 and we're already working on the budget, but that is the process. Tentatively, we are looking to have the budget available for public inspection on May 20th. We will have a budget hearing on June 7th at 7:00, right here in this room. And I am encouraging our timetable to be, to adopt the tax budget on June 14th with June 28th as a backup date. So that's our tentative timetable. And then we, the other piece that we did yesterday was, we reviewed the financial packet through the first quarter. In a word, we are right on target. I guess that's three words. Our income tax year-to-date is up three tenths of 1 percent. Our spending is up two tenths of 1 percent. Real estate taxes, we got a little bit of a timing issue, but we're within 1 percent of what we projected. And when you look at, when you look at the two biggest funds, which are the General Fund and Police and Fire, last year, we spent 22.7 percent of the appropriated amount, and the appropriated amount is within $15,000 of each year. This year, we're at 22.98 percent. So everything is almost a mirror image of the prior year. We're working diligently to spend the taxpayers' money wisely. So I'm cautiously optimistic how this year has started. You know, it takes about three months to start to see any trends or anything, so there's nothing that I've seen alarming either in a positive or a negative way. Next month, at the end of April, when we see the numbers, the number that I'll look at quickly is the income tax number, because we get a significant portion of the income tax in April. So if that trends well, then I'll feel good about the overall general fund for the entire year. So at this time, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Moving on, Recreation, Cable TV, Maria Walter.
We met, the Commission met on April the 14th. The following topics were brought up. The idea of having golf mats being placed in the batting cages, also the no trespassing sign in the picnic area, floodlights that needed to be replaced on the number 70, the fence that is broken, and perhaps a dumpster location situation. And Ms. Kovak is aware of that list of items. We also talked about the list of volunteers that will be available for both days of the Pioneer Community Day. It was important that we would have maybe two separate lists, because if we have a rain date, we want to make sure that we have X amount of volunteers for the second date as well. We also discussed the fact that information was going in the Journal in the June issue, and Ms. Kovak was gracious enough saying that she would add that with the pool ad and so forth. Expenses were discussed for the Fall Fest. We wanted a leaner budget, and investigate the signage on the tennis courts was something having to do with advertising for the Pioneer Community Day, how we could put something in the tennis court area or something like that. And that's, again, we haven't find, firm up anything at this time on that. On June the 7th, the Kiwanis are going to have a golf tournament. It's for a benefit, and I heard that it's a particular group that is going to get together, and Mr. Grease might be one of the people involved in that foursome.
I am.
Okay. We are planning to have the run for the Pioneer Day, the parade after that, the Community Day at the pool. We're thinking about bike ride, a walk around the commons, anything of the ideas that we can present the community with a healthy outlook to live in this community. At the meeting, I requested the scaled-down budget to be presented at the April 17th Community Committee Meeting, and we met, Mr. Kovak and I, we met there and received such a budget. Mr. Koller upon submitted that, the scaled-down version. Mr. Kovak and I made the comments that if this is a year that has a promise, or even not just to be on the block itself, but just with a little bit of profit, it looked like with everything that was presented to us, it was a year that it was looking better than the past year. Feel free to add at any point in time our conjectures on that.
No, I agree with that. From what Doug was brought to us, if you look at the previous years, the investment that we had on the equipment, so to speak, of what you had to bring in is already based, so there's not that expense. And when you get down to it, there were some questions on some of the advertisement costs, and when you take that into consideration, we get into that point where it's feasible that we could actually break even or make money this year, as what I see on paper.
And also the number down of the booths, because it was awfully ambitious that last year, what the enterprise was overtaken, and by lowering down the number of booths would be more manageable and more intimate in kind of a way.
The booths also, as far as food offerings, were going to be very limited, and they were going to be complete opposite ends of the spectrum, so we wouldn't have a hot dog place here and another hot dog place over here. It was going to be very few, three to four food booths out of the 24 booths that were available.
We understand that in 2017, there is a thought or the conception stages of bringing a farmer's market into Green Hills, and we understand also that we can write on the coattails of that on 2017 for the Fall Fest at that point as well. However, the Commission and the committee feel that after good attendance for the event, despite of the monsoons that we had experienced, we would attempt also to change the date to October the 15th, so make it a little bit earlier to a better weather situation. But if we stop one year, the Commission felt that it was detrimental for the event itself, and to catch on back again on 2017, and the tradition would have been broken. On the way across front of the news, I personally have not received any applications or interest of anybody representing Green Hills for the positions, although I heard recently that there has been some that was given to, okay, to the village manager, and I know that they are considering that. Although the previous appointees were interested in staying there, they're being evaluated for the new incoming applications as well. Do you know what time or what would be the date that this is closed, or we would know how to recommend the new or the reappointed members?
Probably at the next council meeting we'll have.
At the work session or the council meeting?
The council meeting.
Council meeting, okay. Thank you. We have on June the 2nd, the Recreation Commission at 7:00 p.m. The committee just informed my co-chair that I would not be able to meet that day, so we have to come up with another time for that, and I beg of him, if he's available, to be present for the Commission as well. On April the 10th, a group of citizens, we met here at 1:00 p.m. to get volunteers for the pots, for all throughout Green Hills, for the greenerys and so forth, and the locations just to beautify the village again. Some of the people that were in charge of that have stepped down, so there is a new surge, and the task has been headed by Lisa Miller, and she can be reached at L-I-M-I-L-L-E-R-62@AOL.com. We still need more volunteers. We had a good show. We were able to make a map out of what are the areas that need some tender loving care, and we just would love to hear for much, much more time to expand in the commons, in giving some beautiful greenery. She has some ideas on those pots, to put some small bush area that then you can just switch around, flower around, and not to start every time with just a total empty pot there. So please, if you see her, she has done already a tremendous job, and I would encourage anybody to come and join us. And, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report. If anybody will have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
These are flower pots, right? Is that what you're talking about?
But of course, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's a lot of news about grow sites and things like.
What were you thinking? What were you thinking?
Nothing.
Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
I'm shocked.
Sitting down here with a red face. Actually, the Intergovernmental Affairs Meeting that was scheduled for Monday was canceled for a lack of agenda. There are a few issues that staff continues to work on, and we hope to bring those forward at our next meeting, which would be May 23rd. And other than that, oh, and the meeting with the school board, I was out of town last week, and Mr. Birdie is currently out of town, so as soon as we, our paths meet, we'll have further information on that. So.
Mr. Lee, I tried to attend to the meeting between the Board of Education and Forest Park Council, as you could attend.
Yeah, they canceled.
And that was canceled, and we don't know when the rescheduled time is.
Okay. Thank you.
Service and Streets, Jeff Kabot.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I don't have a report. We had a scheduled meeting yesterday that has been, was canceled and rescheduled for Monday the 2nd at 8:00 a.m. That concludes my report.
And put me on your cancellation distribution list.
Oh, sorry. Let me make a note of that one.
I'm slow to get going in the morning, but I forced myself up and out, and nobody showed up.
It was a beautiful morning.
How was it?
Okay. So then you wandered over to the Troubadour, right?
Actually, I stopped at the Troubadour on my way up. Okay, Community Development, Jeff Haller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Walking paths, I keep saying that decals are coming. Well, I should be able to pick those up tomorrow. The next question is getting the missing decals for the walking paths down. I looked at the forecast, it's not cooperating right now, but we'll get that taken care of. And as I mentioned before, we're switching the stock of the decals just to see if that makes a difference. The vinyl decals are less expensive, but I know that at Children's Hospital, they're using vinyl and not the aluminum base ones that we have down right now, just to see if that's part of the issue. And I did meet with the shopping center owner, and I'm encouraged, I'm encouraged. It was hard to get his attention because he was with another gentleman, and they were going over every inch of the window front, saying what they were going to do. They had no clue. I was standing there waiting to talk to him, so I do think that he's serious about having something positive happen down at the shopping center. The other thing, too, is he had taken a card from me and wanted to talk about signage. I went over to, I think it's called Hyde Park Square in Oakley, go figure. It's kind of like the Cincinnati Airport in Kentucky, but I went over there and I took some photographs that I'll be sending down to him, because the signage over there, very similar face, facade to the shopping center, but what a difference when the signage is done well. And so, you know, I'm going to pass those along to him, and then Yvonne and I are talking about what we can do to encourage good signage to happen down there from a zoning perspective. Next order of business is, if someone walked up to me and said, "Hey, what do you think of the Harvest Festival?" I think it's one of the best events. I think that, you know, I think it was more of a question. One thing I don't think was accurate, I don't think any of us talked about discontinuing the event. It sounds like we've, you know, axing it, and we don't want to see it again. That would make no sense, especially if we have a farmer's market show up. I think it's more about, you know, resource allocation, priorities as far as volunteers. I think I've chaired over 12 different events for the 75th anniversary. I have yet to be swamped with volunteers, and I hear lots of promises, and I'm not trying to take away from volunteers that are willing to step up. We had 100 paid people at the Harvest Fest. That's 100. That doesn't mean there weren't more people there. I know there were, because some just did the free events. You know, it's just a matter of looking at the resources, trying to set priorities, especially on a year when, you know, we've asked the residents to carry the burden and the cost of garbage pickup and stuff. We just have to look tightly. I like the event, I really do. I can't say enough about all the hard work that Doug and Diana and Patricia and others have put into it. I do have questions about methodology sometimes on how things were done. The other piece on that is, you know, I do think we have to just look at, look at it, and I personally wouldn't make it run any leaner. I think it's an event that is pretty lean, not as lean as Light Up, maybe. You have vendors. I don't know why you would want to reduce vendor count, because they pay to be there, and I think we had a really nice vendor count. And some of the key attractions that make it a Harvest Fest, like the carriage ride, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of that, because that really says Harvest Fest to people. So I actually think the event is quite lean to start with. I think if we make it anemic, if, you know, if and when it comes around again, I don't think it would be beneficial, especially if you're, you know, building momentum as far as that goes. Community Development is going to meet May 4th, Wednesday, May 4th, at 4:30, and that's all I have.
Comments, questions? Hearing none. Traffic and Safety, Melanie Hermes.
We canceled our traffic and safety due to no agenda items today. Our next one should be scheduled for June, I just had the date, June 28th at 6:00 p.m., unless for some reason something comes up before then, and then we'll try and get one scheduled sooner.
Okay. All right, new business. We have a number of ordinances. First one is ordinance number 2016-04, L-N-R, amending section 31101, placing injurious material or obstruction in the street of the Green Hills Codified Ordinances. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Mayor, I move to read the ordinance by title only.
Wait a second. Second?
First reading, ordinance number 2016-04, L-N-R, amending section 311.01, placing injurious material or obstruction in the street of the Green Hills Codified Ordinances.
First reading?
Are we going to be talking that, about that at the work session?
We, we have, what this is, is this is, this is the, where we've talked about the pods, pods being parked, parked in the street. This is, this is the enforcement piece to that issue. So if you look, if you look at the ordinance, you can see the tile size. So if you look, if you look at the ordinance, you can see the italicized wording in section C and D. D in particular.
And adding the words walkway and sidewalk.
Item number two, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh five dash F, resolution requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the ten mil limitation. Mr. Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution two thousand sixteen oh five F, resolution requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the ten mil limitation, whereas the Village of Green Hills has preliminarily determined that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the ten mil limitation will be insufficient to fund necessary services provided by the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Hamilton County. And whereas the primary purpose and intent of such funding is for current operating expenses for the village as authorized by fifty-seven oh five point one nine A of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five point zero three requires the village to obtain certain information from the county auditor prior to proceeding with the submission of a tax levy to the electors of the village, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, Section One, that the village council has preliminarily determined that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of the residents of the Village of Green Hills for current operating expenses for the village as authorized by O.R.C. fifty-seven oh five point one nine A. Section Two, that the levy to be placed upon the tax list is a renewal levy. Section Three, that the village council hereby requests information from the county auditor related to the current total tax valuation of the village and for the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a levy of tax at a rate not exceeding three point two eight for each one dollar valuation for five years. Section Four, that the village council seeks the information requested to present the levy on the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen ballot. Section Five, that the clerk of the village council is hereby directed to immediately certify to the county auditor this resolution obtained from the county auditor the information requested hereunder. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second. Okay. Been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. This is a renewal levy. It is not an increase. It is for three point two eight mils, and it is for operating funds.
Clerk call the roll.
Cabot.
Aye.
Grease.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh five dash F passes. Next one, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh six F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution two thousand sixteen oh six F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfer, whereas the two thousand sixteen annual appropriations that were adopted on December eighth, two thousand and fifteen are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five point three six A five. However, an amended certificate estimated resources does not need to be requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, that's Section One. Since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated, so to permit the Village of Green Hills to purchase a bucket truck during the year two thousand and sixteen, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the two thousand and sixteen year. Fund one thousand, general capital outlay, prior appropriations sixty thousand, change to appropriation twenty-seven thousand five hundred, revised total eighty-seven thousand five hundred. Fund four five zero one tree assessment, prior appropriation fifty thousand, appropriation change ten thousand, revised total sixty thousand. Section Two, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Second.
As we discussed at the work session, we have the opportunity to replace our bucket truck that is no longer functional and cannot be repaired. Mike, our service manager, has been out looking, has found a suitable replacement for thirty-seven thousand five hundred, and so we need to make a change in appropriation so that that may take place.
And so the difference is already in the account? That's why it's twenty-seven five hundred? You said.
Well, twenty-seven five hundred is coming from general fund, and because the bucket truck will be used for tree-type things, additional, tree-type maintenance. Sorry. The addition, we can use some money from the tree assessment fund, an amount of ten thousand for a total of thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Mr. Grease, I don't know if you can answer this question, or maybe Mr. Cabot, did we have all the bids, or this was, after bids, this was the only bucket available, or?
This was not a bid situation. This was, we found something on the open market.
There were multiple vehicles to choose from, and this came in at the smartest allocation of the money for the vehicle we were getting.
Clerk call the roll.
Grease.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Cabot.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh six F, making supplemental appropriations and transfers, passes. Next resolution, number two thousand sixteen dash oh seven S and S, authorizing the municipal manager to purchase a used bucket truck for the Green Hill Service Department. Now that we appropriated the money, we need to be able to buy it. Cabot.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash oh seven dash S and S, authorizing the municipal manager to purchase a used bucket truck for the Green Hill Service Department, whereas the boom on the village's current bucket truck is no longer safe for use, and whereas a used Chevy forty-five hundred series bucket truck has been located at Merrill's Truck Sales. And whereas, village council by motion on April twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, directed the municipal manager to proceed with the process to purchase a replacement bucket truck after a satisfactory inspection by a mechanic of the village's choice. And whereas, village council now desires to proceed with the purchase of said truck. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section One, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the Village of Green Hills to purchase a used Chevy forty-five hundred series bucket truck in the amount of approximately thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from Merrill's Truck Sales. Section Two, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay said vendor an amount up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred for this truck. Section Three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second it. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Assuming it passed inspection, then?
Yes.
Yes.
It's already been used, testing it out, by putting the banner up out here in front. All right. Clerk call the roll.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Cabot.
Aye.
Grease.
Aye.
Motion, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh seven S and S passes. The next one, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh eight S and S, authorizing the municipal manager to accept a proposal from Strasser Construction for crack sealing and micro-surfacing a portion of Burley Circle. Mr. Cabot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash oh eight dash S and S, authorizing the municipal manager to accept a proposal from Strasser Construction for crack sealing and micro-surfacing a portion of Burley Circle, whereas the portion of road service on Burley Circle that was not repaved when a major greater Cincinnati waterworks project was undertaking a number of years ago is deteriorating. And whereas, the life of the pavement can be prolonged significantly by crack sealing and applying a micro-surface. And whereas, Strasser Construction will be working on a project in the neighboring community, and because of that, have been able to revive Green Hills with a good price for completing this work. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section One, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to accept a proposal from Strasser Construction for crack sealing and micro-surfacing a portion of Burley Circle in the amount of approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Section Two, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay Strasser Construction an amount of approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars upon satisfactory completion of said work from the street construction, maintenance, and repair account. Section Three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh eight S and S. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Hermes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Cabot.
Aye.
Grease.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh eight S and S passes. Next one, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine R.C., amending the two thousand sixteen Green Hills fee schedule. Councilmember Walther.
Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero nine dash R.C., amending the two thousand sixteen Green Hills fee schedule as reviewed by the village council at the three twenty-two sixteen council meeting. The resolution reads, amending the two thousand and sixteen Green Hills fee schedule, whereas council desires to amend the two thousand and sixteen fee schedule, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section One, that the council of the Village of Green Hills hereby amends the two thousand sixteen fee schedule to reflect the following daily rate charges at the Green Hills Swimming Pool under three three. All other fees remain the same. Section Two, that this resolution shall be in full force and take from and after its passage. And, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash nine R.C. Any discussion?
I want to know who's going to vote against babies.
Clerk call the roll.
Lee.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Cabot.
Aye.
Grease.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine dash R.C. passes. Next resolution, number two thousand sixteen dash ten, L.N.R., resolution authorizing the village clerk to forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission a proposed amendment to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash ten, L.N.R., resolution authorizing the village clerk to forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission a proposed amendment to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation, whereas amendments to the zoning code may be initiated by the passage of a resolution by the Village of Green Hills that then certified by the village clerk and forwarded to the Green Hills Planning Commission for review and recommendation. And whereas, the Council Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules has developed the attached proposed amendment and would like to initiate formal consideration of the item, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills. Section One, village clerk shall certify and forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission the attached proposed amendment to the Green Hills zoning code. Section Two, the Green Hills Planning Commission, upon receipt of the amendment, shall review, discuss, and approve or modify the amendment, conduct a required public hearing, and convey amendments back to the village council with recommendations plural, all according to section eleven fifty-one point oh eight of the Green Hills Codified Ordinances. And Section Three, the village council will eventually receive recommendations back from the village, the Green Hills Planning Commission, at which time the village council will conduct a required public hearing, and then either adopt or deny the recommendation, or adopt some modification of the recommendation of the Green Hills Planning Commission. Section Four, that this resolution shall be in force and take effect from and after its The attachment is on the back for your review relative to this. Should I read the attachment as well before I make my motion? Okay. The attachment, resolution number two thousand sixteen ten dash L.N.R., proposed change to the Green Hills zoning, to amend the definitions, section fifty-seven, financial institution. A financial institution is any building, property, or activity of which the principal use or purpose of which is the provision of financial institutions, financial surfaces, including but not limited to banks, facilities for automated teller machines, credit unions, savings and loans institutions, and mortgage companies that are F.D.I.C. or N.C.U.A. insured. Check cashing, payday loan businesses, or similar type facilities are not considered financial institutions. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of this resolution.
I second it. Been moved and seconded to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten dash L.N.R. Any discussion?
Is this, when is this going to be in front of the zoning board?
Well, as soon as we set a date. Yeah. Yeah. I think we've got thirty days to set the meeting.
Would this also cover pawn shops? If that would ever come up, just, is that considered a lending institution?
Well, I think, I think the key wording there is pawn shops are not going to be F.D.I.C. or N.C.U.A. insured.
Okay.
That would eliminate them. But the key element was to eliminate the check cashing payday loans.
So when is the earliest it would be back before us? July?
The normal course of events, yeah, it'd be about July.
Yeah. Okay. Just for the viewing.
Yeah, we'll try to hustle.
Also, Jeff, I think it's a good question. Yvonne said that she was going to look at pawn shops and see how those are handled as well.
Yeah, it's covered somewhere in the.
In the definitions.
Yeah.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Walther.
Aye.
Cabot.
Aye.
Grease.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash ten dash L.N.R. passes. All right, calendar.
May fourth, at four thirty, Community Development.
Arbor Day this Friday, at ten thirty A.M. It's going to be down in front of Pioneer Automotive, so be there if you can.
Friday, the, what is?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Did I, did I read the sign correct, the banner across the road? The Reds Community Day is May third?
Correct.
Okay. May nineteenth is the police community gathering at the Troubadour, seven, is it?
Party's open for dinner at six, and the meeting will commence at seven.
Can you say that date again? I'm sorry.
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
And May twenty-third, Laws and Rules, nine A.M. Be there, be square.
Streets and Services meeting, Monday, May second, eight o'clock.
On June the second is the Recreation Commission, and we have to come up with another date for the committee. And the commission meets at seven P.M.
for the committee, and the commission meets at 7 p.m.
Anything else?
June the 2nd, 7 p.m.
May 20th, the 2017 budget will be available for public inspection. June 7th, at 7 o'clock, will be the budget hearing.
Sorry, I laughed, because I thought you were sending something in 2017, the pause. I was like, wow, planning ahead.
That's what we're about.
That it? Hearing nothing else? Meeting adjourned.